And now I'm going to share my screen. Okay, so for anyone who's watching this recording, this is an unofficial part meeting. This is a presentation of the Scott Park Concept Designs. This presentation was originally given on August 4th to the public by the city of Milwaukee and Greenworks. Greenworks is a landscape designer, architecture firm. We're also working with ESO and JLA, public involvement on the engagement side of things. So first thing we will do is just talk a little bit about this presentation. So our agenda is I'm going to introduce myself and the site as it exists today. We're going to take a look at the project overview, you know, where we've been and where we're going. We're gonna do a very high level kind of review of the feedback that we received on May 1st, as well as the feedback that we got online for two weeks on Engage Milwaukee. The, then I'll look at the design diagrams. There's two options here, and just as a note, you'll hear me say this a couple times, but we aren't necessarily at this point voting between one option or the other. We're trying to understand which overall concept you feel fits fits the public's needs and wants. But then we do have the ability to kind of pick and choose different elements that we enjoy and like the best from each concept. And of course, we do have the opportunity to tweak these a little bit. And based on some of the feedback that we've been receiving, I do think that there will be some tweaks that we won't see in here, and I will talk more about those as I look at the individual concepts. And then I'll talk a little bit about the next steps. So we are, when we originally gave this presentation, it was at a planning meeting, and then we went out into the park and we had dinner and we looked at some concept boards, had some informal questions and discussion and filled out surveys. Obviously, we're not going outside unfortunately today, but I will walk through those presentation boards and I will walk through the survey. If you're watching this and you're a member of the public, please go on Engage Milwaukee to fill out this survey. That survey will be available until Friday, September 19th at noon. If you're a part member, feel free to respond to my email with any comments and your survey answers. And then finally, I'll take a look at the project timeline and just kind of give you an idea of where we're going, and then we'll dive a little bit more into these concepts and what all these things mean. Virginia or Ally, do you have any questions so far?
Not so far, following along.
Cool, so. Oh, sorry, Virginia. So you all know me, I'm Adam Moore, I'm the Parks Development Coordinator at the City of Milwaukee, I'm the Project Manager for Scott Park, Bowman Bray and Belfour. And I'm just gonna take a minute here, since I have a little bit of extra time to introduce you to the site. So here we see Scott Park. This is the property that was donated by the Scott, the family of Richard Scott. This yellow border that you see around here is our project boundary. This property here is actually, was actually donated by the Letting family, family. But you can see this existing rain garden, this flat grassy area outside the children's library, the amphitheater and the war memorial, those are in the project as well. We aren't gonna touch the parking lot, and we're probably not gonna touch the existing utility box and planter that was put in with the library. Here we have the condos and apartments that exist across the street, and down here you can see the corner of the library. Just a couple notes of what we're looking at here. So all these kind of dark green outlined areas, these are, that's the canopy of the trees. When we look at the site plans, those are gonna be white outlines. We just do that so that you can see what we intend to build underneath there. Here we have the existing path that goes around the library, along the park. It does not meet ADA standards, it's not wide enough, and it does not meet the grades, that's the slope or the angle that the path takes. And it does cause a dead end here, so these stairs are not accessible by a wheelchair or anybody with a mobility device, and it dead ends again here at the the stage area here. You'll also see over here, this is the causeway area that exists in the park. This is the split rail, or this is the chain link fence here, and this is the split rail fence. You'll see that we aren't including this in the project area. I'll talk a little bit more about this when we look into the concepts. But what we found in our investigations early on in this project is that working on this causeway area to make it safe and accessible will probably cost somewhere around $700,000 or $800,000. Just to give you an idea, for all of Scott Park, we have about $550,000, $600,000. So it was kind of a decision over, do we address the wants and needs in the park as a whole, or do we just give safe access to walk down into this causeway area? And so we've made the decision as the city that any work that would be done in this causeway area past this split rail fence would need to be handled at a later date. Okay, so just talking a little bit about the project. So this project is all paid for by ARPA money, that's COVID stimulus dollars that come from the federal government. Although ours actually is a pass-through grant from the state of Oregon, so thanks to Representative Karen Power and Senator Taylor for their help in securing these funds. These are funds that the city has. The city holds the funds and anything that happens with parks or the park district would not affect this project at all. So this project is moving forward and is paid for. As we've mentioned several times, this project has extremely tight deadlines, and that's why we're doing this engagement in such a tight fashion with so little time in between each sort of engagement area. Just taking a look at the past planning efforts. So again, we had a large event on May 1st, there was over 200 people who participated, and then online we had a number of people who submitted surveys. Somewhere around 40 people submitted surveys, that's the feedback that we'll be looking at. On August 4th, we had another planning meeting. So we had nearly 60 people who attended a portion of that meeting and the survey that goes along with that that meeting and this presentation that we're seeing here today, that will still be open until this coming Friday, August 17th at noon. We do have very strong participation in the survey, just from what I've seen today. The most important part of this project in terms of planning and design for Scott Park, as well as our other two parks, Bowman Bray and Belfour, which we also have funding for, will be this October engagement window. I do now know the dates for that October engagement window, and that will be October 6th through the 19th. We will have surveys available for all three parks. And then the entire city will receive a postcard inviting them to planning meetings for all three parks. Scott Park will be held on October 6th at the Letting Library, that's a Thursday. So just diving back into past planning, so in 1990, a plan was put together by the city. Back then, the library was very different, it was just this very small building here. We had a very large parking lot. And the plan itself called for creating these new kind of accessible areas along the pond and just putting in a couple picnic tables and benches here in the existing park and maybe some new trees. That however, is, that plan has been revoked when the library was built and designed, and you can see that the library is much bigger today, and some of this plaza area and parking has changed quite a bit because of the size of the library. But you can see the existing amphitheater is still here, and that exists here kind of in that library design. Looking at our project timeline. So as I mentioned, we had an event back on May 1st, we gave this presentation originally on the 4th. We have another planning meeting on October 6th. We look to have a final design, what we call a preferred design, or a final plan if you will, by November 2022. We'll be in design and permitting, so that's figuring out the specifics of these concepts that we're looking at. So when I say the specifics, I mean, what is the exact material that we're using? What type of species of plants are we doing? What's the exact size and width of everything? So we're building those engineer, engineered drawings and construction specifications, and we're getting all of our safety permits and land use permits there. We look to break ground at Scott Park around January 2024 and hope to cut the ribbon in September, although that might go into October 2024, which is a hard deadline on this project. Bowman Bray and Belfour Parks will follow a similar timeline. They will also have planning meetings in October. We'll also have preferred design in November, and we'll follow similar permitting and groundbreaking and ribbon coving schedules for Bowman Bray and Belfour. But tonight, the focus is on Scott Park. So at our community events, we asked people how they currently use the park. The top three answers that we heard was viewing plants and wildlife, that they enjoy the library and the park programming, and that it's just a really nice place to relax. The improvements actually mirror the current uses, so people want to continue to view plant and wildlife. They want to continue to have library and park programming, and they continue to want to have a relaxing environment. Some of the challenges that they told us about, the top answer was actually other. So not one of the the selections that we gave them. Most of these that fall into other are some form of, of parking challenge. But we also heard that people just don't have time to visit the park, that there's a lack of accessibility in the park, or that the park felt unsafe. We also heard quite a bit, but not as much from people about adding in play and activities for kids, having more native plantings and natural areas, adding more seating, picnic tables and benches, and providing pond and water viewing areas in the improvements. So diving into this just a little bit more, and we did this both as a community event and as an online survey. When we asked people what was most important to them, when we were talking about shoreline improvements, they were, wanted to see habitat restoration and adding overlooks and viewpoints. With plantings, they wanted more native planting and perhaps a sensory garden. With play, the answers were mostly split, although natural play did come out ahead, ahead of structure play, inclusive play and accessible play. So really what this kind of says to us is that people want to see natural play with a little bit of everything in there. That's not really too uncommon. When we talked, asked them about gathering space, they wanted to see sort of more private rest areas. Now that wouldn't be private space, but that's kind of areas where you can sit down and have a quiet conversation and kind of maybe be off to the side a little bit. Although people did enjoy the open lawn areas where they could have less formal gatherings. When we asked about shade and shelters, they preferred natural shade, so that would come from tree cover. Although we did also hear a little bit about picnic shelters, so we'll try and do that in our design programming. The most popular option was story hours and environmental education, though we did hear quite a bit about outdoor games as well. For public art, people were interested in art installations or interpretive art. And then for circulation, people were really interested in seeing the accessible ramp and a paved pathway throughout the park. And what we've heard from doing our focus groups with people with disability is about the importance of not creating dead ends in the park. And what you'll see in these concepts that we look at is that both these concepts do kind of create a dead end at the amphitheater, which I will point out. And so we're gonna be working between now and October to try and correct that dead end that is created there. So again, I'll mention, we're gonna look at two concepts here. We ask in our survey which concept best addresses the community needs, one or two. But we aren't at the situation where we're voting for one over the other, or we're having to make a hard choice between one or the other. Right now, we are working to see which individual elements people like and overall kind of which concept people prefer. And there's, there's two kind of big differences between these concepts right now, which I'll, which I'll try to point out when we look at these. So if you see things that you like in number one and in number two, please tell us that and we'll try to work them in with the budget in the space that we have available. Later on in this meeting and presentation, I will talk and show some some example images, what we call precedent images on each of these elements that we'll look at. So if you don't know what a pergola is, fear not, I've got some photos later on. But that is sort of the first element that you see in the park. So when you would walk in from the library or the parking lot here, you would see this nice big pergola with maybe either some tables or some benches underneath here. That would kind of be the entryway into the park. We can have perhaps some art here at the pergola, as well as some interpretive signage. We know that the Denny family, who are the relatives of Richard Scott, would like to see perhaps some interpretive signage about Richard Scott. We've also heard a lot about environmental education, so that could be something that could be done here as well. We see that this path in the park would need to be rebuilt to meet ADA standards. As you can see, it does create kind of a dead end here. So we will need to try and find a way to, to complete this loop if we could. Here you'll see number three, several park benches throughout the path. This corner here is kind of a underutilized area of the park right now. This is under the big Cypress tree, I believe it is. We do have some existing logs there, which gave us the idea to build some natural play kind of play logs. I have some pictures of what that looks like here. So the idea would be to activate this space, clear up some of the sightlines, make it more attractive, get some more positive uses there, and we hope that that will be a nice enjoyable space from what it is right now, which is kind of an informal area. Here we see some picnic tables, and so that can be, you know, an accessible picnic table that has this you know, kind of pavement or concrete platform that's on right off the accessible path, or it can be one in the grassy area here. Going around this here, we have some stone steppers, that's another natural play element to go along with the logs over here in the corner. Number four, that's kind of a seat wall, so an area where people could sit down. Not quite a bench, but kind of a design feature that would allow people to sit down at this platform here. So as I mentioned before, it's gonna be too expensive up for us to create sightlines and access to the ponds down here. We just don't know what's underneath there. The permitting and the cost to do the investigative work would be both too costly and the permitting would push us outside of our grant deadlines. But we do think that in this corner of the park, in this area of the park, we can create some more sightlines, especially after we go through and remove some of the invasive species in here. How close we're able to get to the pond will determine on a number of factors, but we know that you know, when you go into the park today, you will see areas in this corner and this edge where the plants and the grass have kind of been worn away. And that's for people going off the path trying to see the pond. So we know that there's some interest in viewing the pond in this area. And so that's where we're gonna try and recreate this in this concept. And again, this is just pathway going back here. And this area in here, number nine, this would be like a riparian area that is planted and has kind of lower maintenance area. And number 11 would be just a nice big open mowed lawn like we have today. Kind of around the outside here, we would have native plantings, but these would be kind of more formal than our riparian area here. So that's concept number one. We'll dive more into this in a second and have some chances to ask some questions. But I just want to go over concept number two. Concept number two, the big difference here is that we have kind of a deliberate playground. Now what this playground looks like and what these materials are made out of, we don't quite know yet. We'll address those later on in the project, but this could be like structure play, this could be nature-based play, or this could have elements of many different types of play structures in here, but this would make play kind of the prominent feature of the park and get rid of that kind of pergola and interpretive area. Again, we see a rebuilt path along the park to the stage. In this concept, we talk about improving the stage area, making that more accessible. Again, we're not gonna touch the rain garden or the existing lawn here. In this concept, we have our native planting along the outside, and again, a riparian area here. In this case, instead of the kind of round platform area, we have this pond platform that is part of the walking path. And then you can see we complete the loop for anybody with full mobility by relocating these stairs here. And the reason we do that is if we put a big attractive element up here at the top of the hill, especially for kids, right, they're gonna wanna play on this and be able to run around right away. And if we weren't creating kind of an access point up this hill, they would do it anyway in kind of a less safe area. And so that's why we've relocated these stairs here at number eight. So just to kind of catch back up on what I was doing, so number one, this is a playground. Number two, this is our, a different type of pond viewing platform. Number three is an improved stage area. For four, we have again accessible benches all along the park. Number 11 would be an accessible picnic table. And then we have one thing that we've heard from the library is they like to do what they call story walks. So number nine would be these permanent kiosks that would be built along the park. And those are areas where they take different parts of a children's story, or perhaps a different game, or they do these like cute little bug hunts for the kids in the park, and they all go out and try and find all the bugs in the park. And so these would be permanent kiosks, places for signage that could be changed out by library staff or park programming staff for interactive activities with kids. I think that covered everything in the concept. So again, we see that this causeway area is just too expensive and time-consuming for us to deal with, with this grant. We will look to see if we can deal with that in the future, but with both concepts, we are looking to put in a gate here right where that existing split rail fence would end. So people can still come down here and take a look at the ponds, but they're not gonna be able to go back in here and walk down here like they can now on that very dangerous kind of lumpy asphalt path like they can right now. I'll take a look at this second concept a little bit later. But just to kind of understand what the, the next steps are, so I'm gonna walk you through, sorry, there's no food, but we will have discussion. I'll walk you through the survey and take any questions you got. And up until, not over the next two weeks, but until Friday, August 17th, we will have a survey online on Engage Milwaukee. But our next immediate steps is we're gonna take feedback from from you all, and we're gonna apply that to these designs in September, in the beginning of October. We're gonna have a planning session for Scott Park on Thursday, August 6th. And on Thursday, August 6th, for two weeks, we're gonna have another online survey. If you're interested in Scott Park, or you're interested in Bowman Bray or Belfour, this October engagement window is so very important for us. That is the time when we're gonna be starting to make some really hard decisions on these plans. Because in order to meet our deadlines for the grant, we need to have those final plans done November to bring them to council in December, so that we have time for design and permitting. And then we're able to break ground in January and construct all the way till September or perhaps October. And so that is my presentation, and so I'll just stop right there and see if there's any questions about the timeline or any questions about the feedback that we received in May. I'll look at the concepts a little bit later. Any questions, Ally or Virginia? Or Natalie?
No.
Okay. So this is concept one again. Okay, remember, this has the pergola as kind of the, the welcoming feature, kind of that gateway feature here. We have perhaps some interpretive arts or some interpretive signage, a rebuilt path, this kind of nature-based play here in the corner, the gathering area with both accessible and non-accessible in terms of wheelchair accessibility, picnic tables, our stone steppers, and our round platform leading to the stage area. Now remember, we can pick and choose different areas. So if you want to say, hey, I like concept one, but you really gotta address that accessibility and use of the amphitheater, feel free to tell us that. Concept number two. Again, play becomes kind of the most prominent feature. That could be with a more formal structure play here in the corner. Whoa, what did I do? There we go. Again, we have a rebuilt path that creates this loop around here with the relocated stairs. Instead of a round pond platform, we have this elongated one. We have improved stairs along with these kiosks for, for programming purposes, and both of them put a gate here. So if you're wondering what the pergola in concept one could look like, and now again, these aren't what we say, this is what it's gonna look like, but these are just some ideas to explain them to you, or maybe spark the imagination. So this is, this is a pergola, so it's kind of a shade structure, but it's, as you can see, some of the light is coming through here because it doesn't have a full roof. It does, it would allow any rain or light through here, but, but less light, so it'd kind of be this slightly shaded area. Artwork could come in the form of a statue. There was a statue that was in Scott Park, the city still has that statue. So perhaps we could bring that back. We would need to work on public art through the city's ordinance on public art, and that would involve the Neighborhood Association artists and the Arts Committee at the city. So in terms of accessible benches or accessible picnic tables, that's what these could look like here. Making sure that there's space for a wheelchair to get to the table or to the bench and use it just like anyone else would, like a caretaker or a family friend could use it. That seat wall that we saw along the stage area, that's what this could look like here. And this is a look at kind of a natural wooden deck. And this one is kind of cool because it uses kind of like the round kind of log look. So instead of planks, these are actually rounds of trees. And landscape logs and rock, this is some examples of what we see here. There are exactly, there are some existing logs in the park there. This would just, in this concept, kind of formalize those. A riparian area could look something like this, and native plantings that are kind of more intentional could look something like this. And you all probably have seen lawns before, but this is what our lawn could look like. Interpretive signage, this is just a look at some, some interpretive signage here. A soft surface trail, so when we look at concept number one, this brown kind of line here, that would actually be a soft surface path, not a hard surface path. And that's what this could look like here. That could be either your engineered wood fibers or your mulch sort of kind of wood material path, or that could be like gravel or stone. And then our rock steppers in this concept that go along, go around that, that platform, that's what these can look like. And there are cases where sand has been utilized in between the rocks, although we're pretty sure the library would appreciate if we not have a sandy area that might get tracked through the library, in which case we might do like an engineered wood fiber, or in some part- Or in some parks, like if you go to like uh Boardman. Uh, the Boardman Wetlands, I think is what they're gonna change the name to. Uh, that's an NCPRD park. Um, they actually use like cement and grout in between these rocks. And that cuts down on the amount of maintenance and reading they need to do. So that's, that's concept one in a nutshell and what it looks like. For concept number two. So again, in concept number two, we have. Play that is that primary sort of feature, um, that major feature that people see from the parking lot in the library. And that can look like a combination of nature based play with rocks and logs. Maybe these are uh artificial materials that are made to look like rocks and logs. So there's some really cool work that's being done with cement and fiberglass. And that could be blended with different accessible play options and structure play options. With like slides made out of recycled materials or even perhaps metal. Uh, the stage area, so we are gonna leave in both concepts that amphitheater there, but we could clean it up. And we can make it much more accessible so that any performer or person who wants to access this area here could do so. Uh, regardless of their um mobility. In this case, the pa- pond platform would be part of that path going along here. So we can see that we've got this nice wooden platform here. Uh, perhaps with some railings uh overlooking the ponds. In this case, you know, this is just another look at a bench. I think we all kind of know what a park bench looks like, but this is another example of one. And then a different type of picnic tables. We have both, you know, the accessible and the less accessible versions shown here. And these pictures are pretty much the same, so just another different kind of look at a repairing area or native plantings. Here's what the relocated steps might look like. Here's what the uh story walk kiosk could look like. So in this case. It wouldn't be primitive signage, but signage that could be changed to meet the the program and that. Uh, would fall in line with some of the existing library programming. And then here's just kind of another way that the lawn could look or be utilized, but I think a lot of us kind of know what a lawn looks like. And so that's where I will, you know, open it up to you, Ally and Virginia. To ask questions about these two concepts or the different sort of elements that we have in here. We have lots of time, so please feel free to ask me questions.
Virginia, did you have, did you want to go first?
My main question is, I don't see a lot of handrail for senior, I think. And then there's no, in the design, they don't talk about lighting. So there's some people would go there at night, and in the summer when it's really dark at four P M. It'd be nice to have some so solar light or something for for security.
Sure, so I I'll address the lighting question first, um, if you don't mind. So lighting in parks is actually uh a topic of a lot of debates. Um, there are a lot of people that feel. That parks should be closed at night. And if you look at our current ordinance and park rules, the parks close. Um, at dusk and don't open again until the sun's back up. There's like a half an hour before or after that's kind of built in there. For people, um, and the concern with lighting in parks is that if you put a light in the park. People are going to feel welcome to use it. Um, and in this park design, we don't have a lot of active uses, like we don't have a basketball court or a tennis court. But um, there's fear that if you put a light. Uh, in a park, people are gonna use it at night when it might be closed. Wow. To kind of your point, I think is um, if we we don't put a light there. Um, perhaps, uh, well, I guess I don't want to speak for you, never mind. Uh, but some people feel that. You know, parks are there, it gets dark and therefore it should be lit. And I've heard from a lot of people on past projects that like, hey, if we don't put a light there. People are gonna go there at night and they're gonna be able to, you know, hide in that darkness. And that's gonna cause it to feel unsafe. And therefore, from a safety perspective. Uh, we need to put that light there because there's no way you're gonna stop people from using the park at night. And so that's. Those kind of two kind of uh thoughts on park lighting that is kind of gross generalizations of the conversation, but. Um, currently under city code and the park rules, parks do close at night, and that is why we don't see. Lights uh in this design. Uh, handrails, we don't have handrails built into this um. Concept that is kind of something that we could add if we felt they're necessary. Um. You know, we would follow any existing um codes. For for railings and things like that. They just might not see that detail in these concepts. Um, but we are looking at uh any of our ramps or pathways would meet ADA standards. And those typically wouldn't have uh need for a railing. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Is there any way to put in like a timed light? Like, is there a way to put in a light where then it go- goes off at a certain point? Or is that been brought up and like not?
So are you asking for like, can we have a light that is timed to go on and off? Yes, we could do that.
Yeah, so that we can like kind of do both. We can regulate what time the light goes off. I mean, I know the ordinance for the park is. When the sun, like they're closed at dusk. But what I'm hearing Virginia say is that there could be areas of the park that would be. Difficult to see. I I guess I'm curious, depending on the design, would there be areas? That would be darker, like, I don't know if that makes sense before dusk. You know, so that people who are using it when it's open still would be at risk and there was a timed light. I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think I see, I hear what you're saying is.
Yeah.
If there are areas that, you know, so like the stage area. And the area where um, you know, in concept one, we see that that kind of. Nature based play with the log underneath that cypress tree, right? Uh, that area is very shady and can be a little bit darker sooner. So I think what I'm hearing from you, Ally, is. Would it be possible to add some timed lighting? Um, you know, that is uh certainly technically possible. Uh, we would have to uh kind of try and time it out. Along with, you know, sunrise and sunset.
Yeah.
Uh, so that could get a little bit complicated from an operational standpoint. Um, but isn't necessarily unheard of. Uh, we could time it to go along with. Library hours perhaps. Um, and try to match, you know, when the library is open or closed. Uh, we did get some comments on August fourth about night activity at the park. And concerns about that. So in both these concepts, we try to address that through. Um, a concept known as uh SEPTED, so Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. Uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with that, we're talking about creating positive uses, bringing more people into the space. And then opening up those sightlines and and designing the park in ways where there's defensible space. And you know, so trees are trimmed up, you know, six or seven feet. We're not doing a lot of ground cover that's, you know, above the knee sort of area. So that kind of creates that feeling where we feel safe, we can see what's around us, and that discourages people from doing. Um, any sort of negative activities in the park. Uh, now we have a uniquely shaped park uh with people who live around it. And so. You know, these are the sort of challenges that we always have with park design. Do we light it? Do we not? What do we do with those? Kind of corners of a park that you just can't design your way through. Um, right now, I think we hope that through design and code enforcement, we are able to address those, but. The nice thing is, is that, you know, things like lighting can be added on later if we feel like they're necessary.
Then, um, my question that I had was for the design, the second design, and I know that these are just. Some sample pictures of the play area that could potentially go in. Has there been any like consideration or thought about an all accessible park? So that, you know, all abilities, all levels can go in there um and play. And then even stuff for people who, for people who are sensitive and on the spectrum, maybe had overstimulated, like an area where they can go to. Regroup and kind of re-center. Is there any talk or consideration about that?
Yes, so as I kind of brief briefly mentioned, we are uh holding focus groups with people with disabilities. Um, the, we will continue to do that uh throughout September. What we've been finding is that holding one specific meeting. Um, uh, for people with disabilities, especially in, you know, uh, the late summer. And early fall is pretty challenging. Everyone's kind of busy right now. And so. Uh, we've held one focus group and we're gonna continue to have. Um, work with people through either individual phone calls, uh, individual surveys. Um, and then kind of a a a a meeting after that space to gain uh kind of feedback that way. Um, we, we are very interested in accessibility. Uh, and making this place feel inclusive. The challenge with accessibility, whether we're talking about physical accessibility. Or sensory based accessibility is that it, from a design perspective, if we try to make it a hundred percent. One of those things or both of those things, the cost goes up dramatically.
Right.
And so our question to the public and to you par, uh, and also to council. Is how do you want us to design in play in this park? Um, and uh, what are you willing, I guess, to give up in this park design? You know, so if we're looking at creating something where someone with a walker or a wheelchair. Or someone with um, you know. Um, any sort of who might need some of those sensory issues that that you mentioned. Um, if we're gonna build a playground like that and a play space like that, uh, what are you willing to give up? Um, and, and I guess my question to all of you is, should that even be a consideration? Right? Should we just say, hey, you know what? No. We're, we're not gonna ask that question. It's not about what we give up, it's about what we can provide. And, you know, is the direction from you and the public to make this. Um, universally accessible and and uh available to all abilities physically and 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 cognitively. Um, so that's the feedback that we're looking from you and the public. Just understand that there will be the trade offs there.
Oh, great. Those are all my questions.
Okay, um. So these are the concepts. Um, as I mentioned, there's a survey online. Um, I've emailed out to park members of the survey as well. But I'm just gonna walk through these survey questions. And the reason that we're using these kind of formal surveys is because that allows the public to give us. The um most useful feedback to us. We are interested in all feedback, so if you're. Um, don't feel like we're asking the right questions. That's why we got this kind of open ended question number four here. Uh, about what else? We will take feedback from anybody at any time. But the most useful time for us to get feedback at this part of the project uh will happen between now and Friday. And then we'll have another really important engagement period in October between the sixth and the nineteenth. When we'll have surveys for all three parks and then planning meetings for all three parks. And for Scott Park. That's planned to be October sixth from six to eight at the Letting Library. Um, so question number one on the survey, and this is on Engage Milwaukee until Friday. Uh, is which concept do you feel addresses the public's needs and and the feedback that they gave us? Concept number one or number two? Uh, Ally or Virginia, I don't know if you want to weigh in there live, or maybe you want to save your comments for for email? Any thoughts?
Maybe email?
Yeah, so it's, it, you can send me an email about these, yeah. Uh, and then number two in the survey that that's out in email. Is pick your five favorite elements from each concept, and this is where we can get into some. Pick and choose between the concept and figure out which elements are are the favorites between the two concepts, and maybe we need to work to blend together. Uh, the third question is, you know, what challenges do you see with this park design? What challenges do you think will exist? Uh, when it comes to visiting the park once it's constructed? Is that parking? Is that safety? Is that accessibility? Is that something else? You can check all that apply there. And then number four, is there anything else we should consider about park, Scott Park? So, you know, we've already heard some of those ideas like lighting, like, hey, what about universal access? So that's where those would go. And then, you know, a big portion of our project is reaching people who haven't been involved before. So we're asking people like, hey, have you participated in a planning event before? Um, and then we really want to try and build relationships with people, even if they're per uh providing feedback. Um, through through comments, so they have the opportunity to. Uh, have someone from the city contact them, and thus they would provide their contact information there. And then we ask some demographic information. Um, this is what we asked in person, like looking at their age. And how they identify gender wise, how they identify with race or ethnicity, their income levels. Um, what language or dialect they speak at home uh primarily, and how they're um connected. To the city or what neighborhood uh they live or work in. Those, there are similar questions, although not the same exact ones that are asked in order to create a. Um. A user profile on Engage Milwaukee, but these are the ones that we asked in person. So, um, as I mentioned, uh, we did have um nearly sixty people who came on August fourth. Some people came just for the presentation and filled out a survey quickly and left. Some people came just for dinner and filled out the survey. And then so far, we've had um just over fifty. Uh, online surveys come in. So really good. Feedback that we're getting on this park and we hope to see a lot more. We will be sending out a reminder email to everyone that the survey is still there on Engage Milwaukee uh until Friday, so. Um, that's what we've got going on. Uh, it is now six o'clock. Um, I planned on doing this uh for another hour. So feel free to ask any questions you like about the project or Scott Park. If you want, we can talk a little bit about Bowman Brer and Belfour. Um, or we can end early. I will leave that all up to you.
I just want to say, Adam, this is awesome. I'm really excited about the, what we are seeing and the process that we've been going through. It's been great. I really have enjoyed it. And it sounds like you've been getting a lot of participation from the community, which is phenomenal. So, good work so far.
Thank you.
Yeah. I do have a question that's not related to this. It does have to do with the conversation that we had at our last meeting. So I don't know if now is an appropriate time or if I should wait until another time.
So I think, I think what we can do now is if there aren't any questions on Scott Park or the park project. What we can do is we can end the recording, and then I'll I'll stick around for any other general park questions that that you all might have.
Yeah, I just have a small one.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop recording now.